Good evening. I'll call to order the City of Arvada Housing Authority and Kristen Rush. If you'll do a roll call.
Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Jones, Commissioner Pfeifer.
Here.
Commissioner Marriott.
Here.
Commissioner Mormon.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Entertain a motion. Mr. Pfeifer.
I move to excuse Commissioner, is that what he's?
Yes, he's Commissioner at this moment.
Commissioner Jones from the housing meeting.
Motion to excuse Mr. Jones. He, his flight got in later than mine, so he was not able to get here in time for tonight's meeting. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones is excused as a member of the Housing Authority. Is there, we have the minutes of the March 6th meeting. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they will stand approved as presented. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to us as we sit as the Housing Authority tonight? I don't see anyone that wishes to. We have two items of new business. Carrie, if you want to come up. The first one is RHA 2302, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the Arvada Housing Authority and Family Tree, Inc. for an affordable housing development grant in the amount of $200,000. Ms. Espinoza.
Thank you, and good evening. This agenda item is related to Family Tree's Marshall Homes Affordable Housing Project at 55th and Marshall Street in Arvada. This project will provide 85 units of affordable housing along with supportive services to the resident on site, and those services will be provided by Family Tree. To support Family Tree's application for low-income housing tax credits, the Arvada Housing Authority committed to provide $200,000 in gap funding. Family Tree was awarded tax credits in November of 2022 and would like to move forward with executing the agreement for $200,000. Mr. Scott Shields with Family Tree is here this evening if there are any questions, and if there are no questions, the city team recommends approval of this resolution.
Very good. Do I have questions or action by council? Mr. Marriott.
Yeah, I have a question. Question I have is, what's the source of the funds for that $200,000?
The source is the, our interest in the Castle Gate property. We are, we have a .01% interest in that property. We receive an annual waterfall payment from them each year, and so we're using payment from that source.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I'll make the motion if there's no other questions.
You may proceed.
I move that R-HA-23-02, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the Arvada Housing Authority and Family Tree, Inc. for an affordable housing development grant in the amount of $200,000 be approved.
Motion for approval. Votes cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, we have RHA 2303, a resolution of the Arvada Housing Authority declaring its intention to apply to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, also known as DOLA, for an allocation of private activity bond cap from DOLA's current statewide balance and to issue or otherwise support the issuance of private activity bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $10 million for the purpose of financing a portion of the costs of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a approximately 260-unit affordable housing facility to be known as Marshall Point Apartments for the benefit of the inhabitants of the City of Arvada. Ms. Espinoza.
Thank you. This agenda item is related to Marshall Point Apartments, a proposed 260-unit affordable housing community located at 52nd and Marshall Street in Arvada. The developer, Lincoln Avenue Capital, is seeking financial support specifically in the form of private activity bonds from the Arvada Housing Authority to assist with the financing of this project. The Colorado Department of Local Affairs is accepting applications for its statewide private activity bond pool, and the deadline to apply is June 1st of 2023. Lincoln Avenue Capital is requesting that the Arvada Housing Authority submit an application for $10 million in private activity bonds to DOLA prior to June 1st, 2023. I believe that Mr. Ben Taylor with Lincoln Avenue Capital is present virtually if there are any questions regarding this project, and if there are no questions, the city team recommends approval of this resolution.
Questions or action? Ms. Simpson?
I'll make the motion if there are no questions.
I see no questions. You may proceed.
Thank you. I move that R-HA-23-03, a resolution of the Arvada Housing Authority declaring its intention to apply to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, DOLA, for an allocation of private activity bond cap from DOLA's current statewide balance and to issue or otherwise support the issuance of private activity bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $10 million for the purpose of financing a portion of the costs of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of approximately 260-unit affordable housing facility to be known as Marshall Point Apartments for the benefit of the inhabitants of the City of Arvada, Colorado be approved. And quickly, I'll just make a comment on the motion. We had the hearing for this, I believe, either two weeks ago, a month ago, if residents are interested in that. There had been some concern from the neighborhood about parks usage, but this facility is really amazing in that it includes two fully contained, basically mini parks for residents, including children's playground equipment and things of that nature. It's just a very thoughtful design in structured garage parking, not on the street. So, really appreciate something like this going in in this area, and the target, target home livers or renters would be single mothers with families, which is working mothers, something we desperately need. So, thank you all for their work on this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Marriott, all votes cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Congratulations. Let's hope that moves forward, and we have success.
Yep.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Espinoza, do you have any other business to come before us tonight?
I do not.
Very good. We shall adjourn as the Housing Authority. And now, this is always kind of interesting. I'll call to order, we'll change our hats, and I'll call to order the Arvada City Council for April 17, 2023. Call upon Councilmember Randy Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. I ask everyone to have a silent moment of reflection, please. And now, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristen Rush, let's see if we have any difference in our roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones. Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mr. Pfeifer, do you have a motion to make, and should we excuse Mr. Jones even though we already excused him earlier?
That would be the motion to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Jones from tonight's business meeting.
Motion to excuse Mr. Jones. That passes unanimously six to zero. Mr. Jones is excused. Next, we have our minutes of April 3rd, 2023. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they will stand approved as presented. Ms. Simpson, you have a proclamation.
I do. The city council is proud to proclaim the week of April 23 through 29.
Apologies, I did not have my microphone on.
We mute you every once in a while on purpose.
I know, it has to happen. All right. City Council is proud to proclaim the week of April 23 through 29, 2023 as National Crime Victim, National Crime Victims Rights Week. I believe we have Commander Anthony Barrows of the Arvada Police Department, and perhaps Sid and Chapman, Executive Director of the Victim Outreach, present to accept the proclamation. So, I'm going to read, and then I'll bring it down to you. Okay. So, whereas the term victim is more than just a label and has legal standing and protections that go along with it, and crime victims' rights and rights acts passed here in Colorado at the federal and at the federal level guarantee victims the right to meaningfully participate and use their voice in the criminal justice process. And whereas victim service providers, advocates, law enforcement officers, attorneys, and other allied professionals can help survivors find their justice by enforcing these rights. And whereas, the right to provide an impact statement ensures that victims' voices are considered in court during the sentencing and when applicable, restitution processes. And whereas, including in elevating the voices of survivors makes certain that they are heard and seen and creates a path to forging and sustaining community trust. And whereas, engaging survivors creates responses and services that are credible, meaningful, and centered on individual needs. And whereas, survivors' lived experiences can serve as a catalyst for implementing innovative programs, shifting existing programs in new directions, and changing policies or practices that prevent survivors from accessing services or pursuing justice. And whereas, National Crime Victims' Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to listening to crime survivors in every space where decisions are made that could impact them. And whereas, the City of Arvada is hereby dedicated to amplifying the voices of survivors and creating an environment where survivors have the confidence that they will be heard, believed, and supported. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and members of this city council that April 23 through 29, 2023 be designated as National Crime Victims Rights Week in Arvada, Colorado. I'd like to invite you to make your hearts.
Thank you so much. We appreciate being included in your honoring the local survivors and victims and your recognition of Victims' Rights Week. Perhaps you know, or if you don't, I'll, I'll tell you and invite you, the annual courage walk is always the Saturday. This year, April 29th, at the end of the week of honoring and celebrating the strength of being a victim and moving into being a survivor. So, we welcome all of you. We'll gather in front of the Jefferson County Courthouse at 10 o'clock Saturday morning, April 29th, and this year is the 30th Annual Walk. So, very special to all of us in the work day to day. The walk steps off at 11:00. We walk around to the back of the courthouse, the west side, and have a brief program, and we're usually wrapped up by noon. So, would welcome you joining us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have a presentation on the 2022 year-end financial report. Mr. Archer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to present on last year's financials. I apologize, this feels a little late. We're in April, but it does take a period of time for us to close the books. Tonight, I'll be joined by Deputy Finance Director Deb Nielsen. So, let's jump right in. So, revenues into the year strong. Expenditures remained in line, but as you see, we got very close to spending our budget due to inflationary pressures. CIP continues to be a major challenge, and that is really around inflation and supply chain, and recession fears are growing. So, let's dive into that a little bit. I get a lot of questions around, are we going to have a recession? If we are, and if somebody knows, they're not telling me. So, what we have to do is take a look at all the data that we have. Right now, I would say we're at a medium to high risk of going into a recession. If this chart had more, we'd say it's probably an orange. Why would I say that? Well, take a look at the next few slides. Every recession in the last 30 years here, 35 years, has been predicated by an inverted yield curve. What's that mean? That means that you get paid more keeping your money in the bank on a short-term basis than you do on a long-term basis. Or in other words, the Treasury Bill, as you can see across the bottom, the three-month, the two-year, you get a greater return than the 10-year. We entered this inversion last July. How quickly does it then lead to a recession? As you can see, sometimes it's right away. Sometimes it takes a little bit of time. On this chart, the arrows represent an inversion. The yellow line represents a recession. And you can see to the far right there, on my screen, that's that inversion line. Next headwind, inflation. We've been talking about this a lot. It is coming back, which is good. We're sitting now at about 5.2%. Hard to celebrate 5.2% as a good inflationary number, but we are. A few other headwinds. You see up here that credit card debt is the largest it's ever been. Auto loan debt, largest it's ever been. Student loan debt, the largest it's ever been. Housing debt, the largest it's ever been. Kind of scary, right? Another concern, our savings rate is the worst it's ever been in history. It has grown up, or has grown, gotten a little bit better the last couple of months, but it hit an all-time low of just over 3% last winter. Now, the positives. Unemployment's still very low. The lowest it's been since 1953 for the United States. The lowest it's been ever for the City of Arvada. That is a very good sign. That means people are able to work. Anybody who wants a job is getting a job. Right now, there's, at last count, two jobs available for every one person looking. Very good tailwind. Very positive. The next, consumers continue to spend. So, if you take a look at this graph, you will notice that we had a small dip directly related to the virus, and then we proceeded to continue to spend both on goods and on services. And finally, the city has done well. Council's budget and fiscal policy has required us to maintain a 17% reserve. We share this chart with you every quarter, and you notice right now, we're sitting at about a 58% reserve. Some people would say that's a little too high, but remember, that is in the current year. We do then take this information throughout our 10-year model to, again, make sure that anything that is approved today by council can be paid for in each of every year in that 10 years. So, at the end of the 10 years, our reserve sits right at 17%. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Deb. She's going to talk specifics about the general fund.
So, this is an overview of the general fund. Mostly positive, a few negatives on this chart this quarter. Auto use tax, it came in just slightly over 2021 numbers, but slightly under budget for 2022. So, we do have a negative there. General use tax as well came in under budget a little bit this year in court revenues. Also, we're under, under budget. However, we do not consider that a revenue generator, but they did come in under budget. We have a monitor on our interest revenue this year due to the fact that our outside bond investors sold a few investments at a loss in 2022 to gain interest and yield in 2023. So, that will come back in 2023. And then, other expenditures, we also have a monitor there, again, due to inflation, increasing costs, and some supply chain issues that we continue to see. Going a little bit deeper into the general fund and sales tax, we did very well. There was a 9%, 9.6% increase over 2021. Couple of areas where we do have some monitor lights on is supermarkets. They came in again in 2022 over 2021. However, they didn't meet the inflationary increase. So, that's why we have a monitor there. Hardware stores is also decreasing from the 2021 numbers. There was still an increase, however, we are seeing that slow down as well. Limited service restaurants is negative for the first time in several quarters, and that's, these restaurants tend to do better during a recession than they do in non-recessionary times. You'll see for full-service restaurants to do better in non-recessionary times, and they do worse during a recession. So, they invert a little bit. And liquor stores are on a monitor as well because they have decreased since 2021.
Do we, with the change in the law that's allowing grocery stores to sell wine, are we able to monitor that, or do we just get the raw numbers for sales tax receipts?
We're, we're receiving the raw numbers.
Okay, so we can't really see if that shift is happening or how much that shift's happening?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Here's a little deeper dive into the different categories within sales tax. This shows the top 70% of our sales tax generators. And as you can see, grocery stores still did well, however, much lower than 2021. Hardware stores, as I had stated, they are, they have increased from 2021, however, they are slowing down as well. And we have the red light on the liquor stores. And this is just another view of the same data showing that, you know, grocery stores did have an increase. The one item I'd like to point out here is our electronic online shopping, and you can see in the last three years, that has really increased, you know, due to the Marketplace Facilitator Act, and, you know, the pandemic also contributed to that. As you can see, auto use tax did increase over 2021, but as I had stated, just a little bit over 2021. 2021 had shown quite an increase from, from 2020. So, we're seeing a little bit of a slowdown there as well. General, general use tax decreased from 2021, and it's also did not meet the budget for 2022. There's just not as much investment in equipment, and, you know, businesses are not reinvesting in this area either right now. Moving on to the other funds within the city. We have a warning on revenues for community development, and that is due to, we're seeing repayments of housing loans slow down due to the increased interest rates. People are just not refinancing as often to pay those, those loans back. So, we do have a warning on that, to continue to watch that. Capital projects, we have a warning there on expenditures and the year-to-date. This is all due to the inflation and increasing prices, increasing costs to, you know, perform these projects and get them done, and some supply chain issues we're seeing there as well. Are there any questions on those funds?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. Archer is going to take it over again.
Okay, let's talk a little bit more about the other funds. As you see, we put monitor lights both on water and wastewater, and that, again, is related to CIP and really the challenges that we're seeing in that area. They're doing a wonderful job with their projects, but we certainly have concerns if inflation continues. We have a monitor light on stormwater, and that's truly because they came in just a little bit below budget. We're not expecting that to cause any issues moving forward. You will notice that, for the first time in a while, our golf fund has all positive lights. We're very excited about that. And in speaking to the golf team, we heard something really neat. They shared with us that they have the most diverse group of golfers that they've ever experienced, and that means anything from families to couples to individuals to ladies clubs to men's clubs, to anything you can imagine playing golf now and visiting the restaurant, and we're very excited for that and hope that will continue both at Westwood's and Lake Harbor. You'll notice the solid waste has a monitor both on revenues and year-to-date. Some of this is timing. We've had to purchase some additional carts that we did not expect, which actually is a very good thing because that means we have more customers coming in, but they don't start paying for those carts. And so, a lot of that fell at the end of the year. Again, remember, solid waste is kind of on a fiscal year. If you remember, we did the contract in July, and so, this is really a timing thing, and it will go away by the time we get to July. And then, we've spoken before about risk management and the concerns around our various cases and claims, and we're working through those with legal department, along with the risk department, who is doing a wonderful job, and we're hoping to be able to take these off very soon. Deb spoke already a little bit about our investment portfolio, and if you dive a little bit deeper into the numbers, you'll notice that our outside firm actually produced worse in 2022 than they did the prior year. A lot of people would say, well, why is that? Deb, Deb told you, that's an actively managed fund, and so, they will take a loss on a fund, on a short-term loss, to get a long-term gain. And so, you'll see their numbers start to grow pretty significantly in 2023. We're a buy-and-hold operation, so we buy our investments and keep them till maturity. And so, you'll notice, we did a little bit better during a down period, but as the growth goes up, we will fall behind. And that's part of the reason why we have both of these and we're offering both of these. And if council remembers a few years ago, this is why you approved us and allowed us to do this. One of the other questions from council related to the level of investments, and so, you also allowed us a year ago to invite, to buy investments below A-rated. And so, you'll see, this is the list of the items that we have right now, about 21 million of our overall portfolio, not a large number, about eight and a half percent. And hopefully, many of these entities look very familiar to you, and as they roll off, we will look to increase the credit that we are purchasing. Final item we have for you tonight is an update on grants. So, we're hearing from council that you would like to see this information more often. And so, what we are proposing with our next quarterly update, which will actually happen in May for the first quarter of 2023, so next month, is these items. So, we would like to bring to you prospecting, which we've not done before, which is really, as you send many grants to us and as does many of our other team members, some of the grants, we take a look at and we qualify for, and we go ahead and apply. Other ones, we don't qualify for, and then we set those aside. We will be communicating to you all of those. Pending requests means if it's something we're going for, we went ahead and put in an application. Awarded, obviously, we got an award. And then, we would like to bring to you what our current portfolio looks like, including where we are from a spending perspective. Realizing this may not be everything you want, we would like to ask for your feedback if there's anything else that we could provide. We are implementing a tool called Amplifund to help us with this, and that is what we will use to then report back to you. So, again, I could certainly run down some of these numbers for you tonight if you would like, but looking for a more robust presentation in, in May.
We'll look forward to that discussion.
Okay. That's our presentation tonight. Any questions that we can answer?
Any other council questions? Ms. Smith?
I just want to thank you for adding some of that grant stuff in there. I know I bug you a lot about it, so thank you.
That's okay.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Archer.
Thank you.
Next, we have public comment. I have Ace King. Mr. King? Good evening.
Good evening, all. Is the overhead?
Just put it on that table there. Center it.
Some of you might remember me from before. I had a problem with one of our neighbors. His wolf hybrid jumped over our back fence and attacked a friend's dog, and the animal control came out, and I believe he was issued a summons. Since then... Since then, we've adopted a four-month-old Scottish terrier. The webbing you see behind him, we added just to keep him from going behind the hedges and kind of getting into trouble. Now, a few weeks ago, the neighbors' four wolf hybrids dug under the fence and entered our backyard, jumped over a fence, walked around our front yard, ran up and down the streets. Kind of hard to see that one. They were issued another summons for that. They, the court has kind of been dragging its feet on this. Animal control has been dragging its feet a little bit on it. But I would urge you, if possible, to consider maybe increasing the penalties for this kind of thing, maybe restricting the ownership of wolf hybrids. At the moment, they're allowed three. They have four adults and one half-grown dog. And they've kind of posed a problem for us, the people in our neighborhood, and whatever you can do maybe to strengthen the existing laws on this would be greatly appreciated. And I'd like to thank Mr. Mormon for his help on this, and, well, like you say, whatever help any of you can lend would be very nice. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. We'll have a report back from our city team on this issue, and, you know, when it comes to the court, we have to be very careful because you've got a separation between judicial and legislative, but we can certainly have discussions as it pertains to penalties, and, and we'll, I'm sure the judge can give us an update as well.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate you. And your, and your dog's doing okay?
Yes.
Good.
Tearing up a rug and occasionally pooping in the house, but he's doing much better.
Good.
I do have a video, if anyone would like to see the dogs roaming around up and down the street. I don't know who I would leave it with. I have a little flash drive.
Give it to Ms. Rush, and she can make sure that she can upload it so we can...
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you again. I appreciate you listening.
You bet, sir. Do we have anybody else that would like to... Do we have anybody else that would like to address city council? Yes, sir. If you'll come down to the podium and state your name and address.
Hello, all. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Ken Cooley, and I have purchased a lot in the Minor Calendar subdivision in 2001, and the address is 8780 West 68th Place. And I have been, the lot came preattached with a infrastructure development that was preattached with the sale of the lot. And I've been working diligently on getting that going, and we do have a development permit underway. It's D E V 2200027 is the permit number. And I'm here today, I've been trying to get the tap fees paid, and I'm sure you guys have heard a lot about this lately with the increase that's up and coming. Basically, I'm a builder-owner. I'm not a developer, and it's just, I'm a single dad. It's me and my kids. And this has been a dream of ours, and it's basically been one step forward, two steps back, the whole process. Just here to plead for a extension, some sort of an extension for getting the home plan through permitting. It's currently under architecture, and we're working diligently on getting that into the city so we could try to meet the deadline. However, it's going to be real tough to do at this point in time. I think, you know, not being a developer and going through the process, I probably should have started on the house plan a little sooner. Nobody has told me, or I didn't have any kind of flags indicating that, you know, I had an indication that the cost was going up. I didn't have any kind of indication that it was going to double, and didn't have any kind of, you know, hey, this is happening on any kind of timeframe. Nobody basically sent me any kind of flags. So it's been a learning curve. If I were to do it differently, I probably would have done the house plan first versus trying to get the infrastructure development going and wouldn't be here. However, I'm really working hard trying to get this thing on track, and it's been tough, especially in the economy with inflation and things like this, you know, getting in the way of getting things going. So I'm here to ask for some kind of an extension or, you know, forgiveness of, or let me get the tap fees paid maybe a little early in the process, if possible, is really the reason I'm here.
Okay. We appreciate your request. We'll have our city team give us some feedback on it, and someone will get back to you.
I do appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Uh huh. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. In terms of new business, we have the Consent Agenda, R 23035, a resolution deleting and reenacting policy number 400.1 related to proclamations, recognitions, and awards of the City Council Policy Manual. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Resolution Consent Agenda Item R 23-035 be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being in excused absence. Thank you. We'll move now then to resolutions. First, we have R 23036, a resolution authorizing the naming of the city park located north of the Van Beaver Creek Trail and southeast of the intersection of Ward Road and West 58th Avenue. Vanessa James is Director of Vivint Community and Neighborhoods will be making the presentation.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, the Arvada Parks Advisory Committee, or APAC, has recommended three proposed names for the new park. On April 3, 2023, APAC presented the following three names and recommended them to the Arvada City Council: Strawberry Park, Vista Verde Park, and Little Raven Park. APAC completed community engagement and outreach as part of the development of their name recommendations. The committee invited community members, particularly people who live, work, and recreate within half a mile of the new park, to complete a survey. The survey invited participants to select their preferred park name generated by APAC and/or offer up their own ideas. APAC presented the survey results during a city council presentation on April 3, 2023. The city team recommends that the city council approve one of the three names recommended by APAC.
Very good. Discussion from city council or motion? Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. If there's no questions, I'll make a motion, and then if anybody wants to discuss the motion, we can do that after, if that's okay?
Very good.
Okay. So I'll move that R 23-036, a resolution authorizing the naming of the city park located north of the Van Beaver Creek Trail and southeast of the intersection of Ward Road and West 58th Avenue, be alternative number three, Little Raven Park. And I'll make a comment. So number one, I really appreciate the work that the Parks Advisory Committee did in naming a park. Naming a park in Arvada is actually a relatively rare thing in my 10 years here on council. I believe this is the third one that I have participated in, and two of them have been in the last four months. The alternatives that they came up with, I think, were all good and all possible. There was not any one of them that was absolutely a standout winner, and so any one of the three would have been acceptable. And of those three, I've heard from a number of citizens who live very close to the park, and their consensus was that they preferred that name, and I agree with them. So that's why I put that one forward, and I will be voting yes on this motion because of that. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Marriott, for this motion. I will be supporting this. I think it's important for our community to be recognizing Native American leaders, and in particular, Little Raven, who is a principal chief of the South Arapaho Indians. Our community stands atop of ancestral lands, the Cheyenne, Arapaho, Ute, and Lakota nations. And I think naming our newest park, Little Raven, honors these nations and their legacies. So I think this is a very important recognition for us to do in naming this park.
Very good. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. I also will be voting yes. I had originally been leaning slightly towards Vista Verde because of the green and everything that signifies in the design of the park. But as Mr. Marriott noted, we heard from a number of residents, and there was a very clear consensus. And frankly, I love Little Raven as well, so it wasn't that hard of a flip. So yeah, I'm enthusiastically supporting Little Raven.
Very good. You know, I came in totally open-minded tonight in terms of the three names. They were all good. I appreciate the work of the Parks Advisory Committee and what they presented. Frankly, I was swayed by the individuals who sent us emails in support of Little Raven. And what weighed heavily with me was Lorraine Anderson's comments. You know, initially, a number of people liked Strawberry Park, but really, that's more of a wheat ridge thing than an Arvada thing in terms of the history of our community as it pertained to, you know, we had a lot of celery in Arvada, not so many strawberries. And so I really appreciated Lorraine Anderson chiming in and giving us her input, and she also supported Little Raven. So I'll be supporting Mr. Marriott's motion. If you'll all cast your votes. All votes are cast. That passes unanimously. Mr. Jones, who has the business closest to this park by his inability to be here tonight, has lost his right to, but I'm sure he would have been supportive as well. So that passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being in excused absence. Next, we have a Resolution R 23037, which is a resolution authorizing a First Amendment to the Master Intergovernmental Agreement by and between Apex Park and Recreation District and the City of Arvada governing the lease and maintenance of certain facilities and parks and amending the ground lease for the indoor turf fields on the Stinger Lutz Sports Complex. Vanessa James will be making this presentation as well.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The City of Arvada and Apex Park and Recreation District entered into a master intergovernmental agreement on June 28, 2022. Apex and Arvada now wish to amend the master IGA to add, one, a lease agreement of property located on Arvada's Gibbs West Community Park to Apex for the use of constructing, maintaining, and operating an archery range; and, two, a use agreement for Apex's property located at 13200 West 72nd Avenue to the Arvada Police Department for police training. The City of Arvada and Apex Park and Recreation District are separate political subdivisions of the State of Colorado. Each entity has the power to provide park and recreation services within their respective boundaries, a large part of which overlap. The City and Apex strongly desire to maintain a cooperative relationship to achieve maximum community benefit while avoiding duplication of services, expenses, and efforts wherever possible. The terms of this amended master IGA have been discussed and refined by both entities to maximize efficiency and service to the community. The Arvada team recommends that the city council approve R 23-037, a resolution authorizing a First Amendment to the Master Intergovernmental Agreement by and between Apex Park and Recreation District and the City of Arvada governing the lease and maintenance of certain facilities and parks and amending the ground lease for the indoor turf fields on the Stinger Lutz Sports Complex.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. If there are no questions, I'd like to make a motion.
You may proceed.
So I move that R 23-037, a resolution authorizing a First Amendment to the Master Intergovernmental Agreement by and between Apex Park and Recreation District and the City of Arvada governing the lease and maintenance of certain facilities and parks and amending the ground lease for the indoor turf fields on the Stinger Lutz Sports Complex be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes unanimously. Ms. Change, thank you for your work on this, you and your team. I think that the partnership we have with the Apex Park and Recreation District is so very important for the benefit of our citizens, and I feel like we're really in a good place in terms of working together, and I think this resolution supports that. The reality is, is that that indoor turf facility really came to fruition because of the fact that we, the old site was in the floodplain, and we all worked very hard together to make that happen, and it's been a huge success for all parties. Next, we have a Resolution 23038, a resolution authorizing the First Amendment to a construction management agreement for pre-construction services for the Myers Pool Replacement Project to expand the scope of work to include Phase 1A parking lot construction and granting Saunders Construction, Inc., the general contractor agreement for Phase 1A. And Mr. Archer, you're going to be presenting this one.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The Myers Pool Building will be constructed in the existing Myers Pool parking lot. Based on the pool remaining open during the majority of the construction timeline, an additional parking lot needs to be constructed south of the Myers Pool on district property next to Water Elementary. This was all created through an IGA with the city, the school district, and the Apex. The parking lot will eventually serve as additional overflow parking. There will be 160 spots added on a temporary basis, and 60 of those will remain after the pool has been completed. The construction of the south parking lot is within budget at an estimated cost of 1.4 million. The reason that we are asking for a First Amendment to our original agreement is Saunders was the most affordable bid and came in $200,000 lower than any other bids. So staff moves or proposes that city council moves approval of this resolution.
Very good. Council questions or action? Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make the motion.
You may proceed.
Thank you. I move that R 23-038, a resolution authorizing the First Amendment to a construction management agreement for pre-construction services for the Myers Pool Replacement Project to expand the scope of work to include Phase 1A parking lot construction and granting Saunders Construction, Inc., the general contractor agreement for Phase 1A, to be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being in excused absence. Thank you. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I only have one first reading. I move that Council Bill 23-009, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of, issuance of the City of Arvada, Colorado Sales and Use Tax Revenue Bonds, Series 2023, be approved on, approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public caring set for May 1, 2023 at 6:15 p.m.
Motion for approval on first reading. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being in excused absence. Thank you. Next, we have an appointment to the Metro Water Recovery Board. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to appoint Sharon Israel as Director to the Metro Water Recovery Board for a term beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2025.
Motion to appoint Sharon Israel to the Metro Water Recovery Board. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being in excused absence. And at some point, I think it would be appropriate to formally thank Mr. Bill Ray for his years of service on that board. Next, we have appointments to boards and commissions. Let me lead this off with, we have so many great citizens who apply for our various boards and commissions. It is a, frankly, a heavy lift for both the city team and city council in terms of doing the interviews, meeting with the folks, deciding who to appoint to these boards and commissions. And I can tell you, by talking to other mayors, and I know other council members have talked to fellow mayors and council members as well, that what's happening in Arvada is sort of unique in that we have way more qualified people apply for our boards and commissions than we could possibly seat. It's an embarrassment of riches. And I frequently hear from my fellow council members that the people who apply for our boards and commissions are way more qualified than any of us sitting up here at times to be able to serve us and give us some advice, and we are so grateful for everyone who applies. We're sorry that we're not able to find spots for everybody. I would urge those who do not get appointed to apply for something else. But I'm going to go through the list here tonight of our appointments. Ms. Simpson, you get to lead it off.
Oh, goodie. So for Arts and Culture Commission, I move to reappoint Judy Gardner and Evelyn Miner for four years, for four-year terms ending April 30, 2027.
This is for the Arts and Culture Commission. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being in excused absence. Thank you. Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor. Arvada Festivals Commission, I move to appoint Larkin Rao, Janine McQuade, Adrian Gomez, and Rachel Urick to full terms ending April 30, 2026. I move to appoint Fay Skaggs and Allison Butler to unexpired terms ending April 30, 2025. I move to appoint Lisa Garza and Barrett Wolf for unexpired terms ending April 30, 2024. And I move to reappoint Stephanie Bednar, Rebecca Louferson, and Kimberly Major for three-year terms ending April 30, 2026.
Motion for the Festivals Commission. This is a great board, and as we just experienced with the Kite Festival, they work very hard. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being in excused absence. Next, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah. The Arvada Liquor Licensing Authority, I move to appoint Tom Tenison to a full term ending April 30, 2026. I also move to appoint Eric Anderson to an unexpired term ending April 30, 2025. I move to appoint Stephen Eldridge to an unexpired term ending April 30, 2024.
And a reappointment?
And I move to reappoint David Calder for a one-year term ending April-
One-year term ending-
One-year term ending April 30, 2026.
All votes are cast. Those appointments to the Liquor Licensing Authority are approved six to zero. Mr. Jones being in excused absence. Next, I will move to appoint Daria Drago to the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority for a five-year term ending April 30, 2028.
And I'll move to ratify Mayor Williams' appointment of Daria Drago to the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority for a five-year term ending April 30, 2028.
All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being in excused absence. Mr. Marriott? I'm sorry. Ms. Smith?
All right. Building Code Advisory Board, I move to appoint Sharon Hensley and Bill Decamp to the Building Code Advisory Board for full terms ending April 30, 2026. And I move to reappoint Cheryl Cheney and Danielle Jaeger for three-year terms ending April 30, 2026.
That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being in excused absence for the Building Code Advisory Board. Ms. Simpson?
All right. Design Review Advisory Committee, I move to appoint Danielle Forthman to the Design Review Advisory Committee to an unexpired term ending April 30, 2024. I move to reappoint Steve Byers, Peter Kazura, Fong Lee, and Deborah Pearson to three-year terms ending in April 30, 2026. terms ending in April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
That passes, did I strike that before it showed? Okay, revote, sorry. I didn't like the first outcome, so we're going to redo it. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being an excused absence, so those appointments have been made to the Design Review Advisory Committee. Mr. Mormon?
Golf Advisory Committee, I move to appoint Eric Berger to the Golf Advisory Committee for a full term ending April thirty, twenty-twenty-six. I move to appoint Carolina Triska to an unexpired term ending April thirty, twenty-twenty-four. And I move to reappoint Ally Brady and Julianne Rennie to three-year terms ending April thirty, twenty-twenty-six.
Motion for approval.
Yep.
Let's do that one again. Did it nutshell? It was showing on my chart, but, okay, six to zero. Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Those appointments to the Golf Advisory Committee have been made. Now, Ms. Smith, because you were the one pushing for the creation of the Housing Advisory Committee, you get to go through all these, leading off with, with our desire, desire for you to be appointed as our representative. So will you make the motions?
Yes, I will wait to see if, Mr. Marriott, do you want to do it first?
Sure. I'll go first. Let me start by, I'll move to appoint Lisa Smith to the Housing Advisory Committee for a four-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven.
We would have been okay with you self-appointed, but that's okay.
Do I, do I have to vote for myself?
Yes, you get to, well, you can vote no, let's see how it plays out. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being an excused absence.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Smith?
All right. The Housing Advisory Committee, this was a, a lot of people that applied for this, so this is a really good board, I'm excited for. I move to appoint Paul Bunyard for a four-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. I move to appoint Mindy Moore for a two-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. I move to appoint Matt Whittle for a four-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. I move to appoint Roger Jones for a two-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. I move to appoint Harrison Wilderdink for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. I move to appoint Tim Rogers for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. I move to appoint Pat Noonan for a three-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. And lastly, I move to appoint Andrew Heesacker for a two-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Thank you. That's, that's going to be an important new committee for the city, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what they present to us. Mr. Pfeiffer?
All right. Human Services Advisory Committee, I move to appoint William Morgan Stern to the Human Services Advisory Committee for a full term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. I move to appoint Melissa Jamieson for an unexpired term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. I also move to reappoint Laura Andes, Shelley Beasley, and Tracy Brooks to a three-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
That motion passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being an excused absence to the Human Services Advisory Board. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I move to appoint Karen Miller, Rebecca Hoshen, and Karen Holmes to the Park Advisory Committee for full terms ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. And I move to appoint Karen Gerbach and John LaCoix to unexpired terms ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. And I move to reappoint Myra Grace Dowling to a three-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Ms. Simpson?
I move to appoint Miles Hayes to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for a full term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. I move to appoint Alex Prey to an unexpired term ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. I also move to reappoint Darlong Cheng, Belissa Hardy, and Laurel, Laurel Matri to three-year terms ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
That motion passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being an excused absence for the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Mr. Mormon, you get the last one.
Yes. Last but not least, another very important committee, the Transportation Committee. I move to appoint Paola Masoli and Michael Coslow to the Transportation Committee for full terms ending April thirty, twenty-twenty-six. And I move to reappoint Terry Binder, John Gerard, and Cindy Stovall to three-year terms ending April thirty, twenty-twenty-six.
Votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being an excused absence for the Transportation Committee. Thank you all for your work, and Chris Coke, to you and your team, I know it's a lot of, a lot of work putting this all together, and you do a great job for us every year. Thank you. Okay, we do have some public hearings tonight. The first one, and I will open the public hearing on R twenty-three oh-three-nine, a resolution approving the first amendment to the amended and restated service plan for Sabell Metropolitan District, formerly known as Sabell Metropolitan District Number Two. Ryan Stachowski will be Director of Community and Economic Development, will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this. So this presentation is an amendment to the Sabell Metro District Service Plan. Sabell was developed in three phases. Sabell One, which is closer to Ward Road, Sabell Two, which is close to the Timberline Development, and now finally Sabell Three, which is located in between. So originally, when this metro district was created, it was created for Sabell One and Two, and there was a spot in the middle that eventually needed to be annexed and zoned in the city. That work is done. That work was done earlier this year, and so now the Sabell Metro District is asking for the hole in the donut, if you will, to be included in the metro district. The staff is supportive of it primarily because the infrastructure that was built in Sabell One and Two is intended to also support the development of Sabell Three. Additionally, they're not asking for any additions to debt limit or any other changes to the service plan. Everything is the same except for the inclusion of this area, and by adding more units or assessed value, then the overall tax burden of the district will all go down because they will all pay a little bit less in order to help pay back the debt that's been issued for this district. So that's why we're supportive of it. I know that an attorney for Sabell is in an audience, if you have any specific questions, but staff is supportive, and we're happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Quick question for you, Ryan. Is, um, do they fall under the new ordinance around metro districts, or do they still fall within their older?
So...
Because they should be falling under the new, since that's a change of the plan, I would assume they fall...
It's within the new.
So they will fall under the new requirements?
That is correct.
Okay. I'll make the motion if there's not any other questions.
Mr. Marriott, did you have a question? No. Mr. Pfeiffer, you may proceed with your motion.
Okay. I move that Resolution twenty-three zero-three-nine, a resolution approving the first amendment to amended and restated service plan for Sabell Metropolitan District, formerly known as Sabell Metropolitan District Number Two, be approved.
Motion for approval. Votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, we'll open the public hearing on Council Bill twenty-three double-oh-seven, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental programmatic agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Colorado State Historical Preservation Officer, SHPO, regarding the administration of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD programs. And Carrie Espinoza, Manager of Preservation and Resources, will make the presentation. Good to see you again.
This ordinance would approve a programmatic agreement between the City of Arvada and the State Historic Preservation Office, also known as SHPO. As a recipient of HUD's Community Development Block Grant Funding, or CDBG, the city is responsible for compliance with Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty-six. The city's CDBG grant activities may include minor maintenance and repair programs, rehabilitation, demolition, and new construction, which may have limited potential to affect historic properties, and the city is required to consult with SHPO prior to completing each project. With no programmatic agreement in place, each property is subject to an individual consultation with SHPO that could take up to thirty days. Approval of this agreement would allow staff to approve projects based on agreed-upon stipulations set forth in the agreement without further consultation from SHPO and expedite the rehabilitation projects in the community. The city team recommends approval of this ordinance.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. Ms. Simpson?
I'll make the motion if there are no questions.
There are no questions.
All right. I move that CB twenty-three dash double-oh-seven, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental, intergovernmental programmatic agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Colorado State Historic Preservation Officer, SHPO, regarding the administration of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD programs be approved on final reading numbered forty-eight forty and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Thank you. And now I will open our final public hearing for tonight. Council Bill twenty-three double-oh-eight, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. Director of Finance, Brian Archer, will make this presentation. And you got to tag-team it again, aren't you?
We are. We are. So tonight, we are bringing the carryover request to you for your consideration. In the carryover, we bring three different types of items. The first one is twenty-twenty-two carryover items, which are projects and programs that were approved in twenty-two but not completed in twenty-twenty-two. Twenty-twenty-three one-time items, these are priorities that have been identified during the twenty-twenty-two budget process but did not have an identified funding source. And then the twenty-twenty-three new requests. These are also items that have been identified in previous council, city council meetings that need a formal appropriation. So this page is an overview of the carryover requests, the projects and programs that were not completed in twenty-twenty-two. As you can see, it's just over thirty-nine million dollars. Most of this is for capital projects in water, wastewater, stormwater, and the computers fund, and we're going to go a little bit deeper into those. So the carryover for the general fund is just about two-point-three million, just under that. There are some projects in there, the street lighting analysis, court security, and some office remodels make up unfinished projects. We've got affordable housing, an amount in there that is the two-hundred-thousand-dollar loan to the Vance Street Flats project. And then we have the carryover included the Broncos funding that we had received in the fall. We have identified projects for that. Other funds, as you can see, there's twenty-eight million dollars just in the capital projects fund there. And those projects, there's several projects listed there. The capital projects does include the water, the wastewater, and the stormwater funds as well. We've got some money in street maintenance that we're carrying over, the ARPA funds that were not used in twenty-twenty-two. We have several equipment and vehicles that were ordered in twenty-twenty-two and not received. And then some operations items for various items that were ordered in twenty-twenty-two and not completed, and some other items there. Are there any questions on? And then I'm going to let Mr. Archer go into the one-time detail and the new requests.
Thank you, Deb. So what you see in front of you is the list of one-time items that are being brought forth. As you can see, this list is pretty short. Many of these items were budget priorities, again, that we did not have funding for. In years past, the one-time items have been as small as a million dollars and as large as over nine million dollars. And again, we'll go into depth a little bit later on how we come up with what is truly one-time, but hopefully none of these projects look new to you all.
Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. Mr. Archer, I just have a question about a one-time project that I'm trying to hone in on where it is in the process. So I, we, we approved the Pomona Parcel Bike Plan. Where does, tell, remind me how that fits into this piece?
So that was part of the one-time funding from the prior year. So that's now an active project, and will run as an active project until completed. So it does not need to be reapproved by city council. Our, and that's actually a very good question, Councilmember Mormon, our capital projects, once they're approved, do not need to be reapproved unless they're water, wastewater, stormwater, any enterprise project has to be reapproved every year until it's completed. Our general capital projects, once they're approved, that approval carries till completion.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions before?
No other questions at this point.
This next slide represents our new requests. Again, these are items that have been already approved or presented to city council but need formal approval. You can see two large items on this list, capital projects and the water fund. We'll jump a little bit deeper into those. And again, the water fund, approximately fifteen million, are projects related to the approval of the bond issue, but we did not have the specific dollars. And so now we have the specific dollars, so we're bringing them to council for final approval. And then you'll notice, under the CIP fund, Deb spoke to these, there's the ERP, which is approximately three million dollars, our Bronco funds, about a million dollars, and then we have reoccurring dollars that come in every year. These are items like park development fees, lands dedicated, Adams County open space, our three cents per thousand, and at the end of each year, once those are accumulated, we bring them to city council for final approval so they can be used in the projects as we move forward.
Mr. Marriott?
Mr. Archer, I have a question about the ERP item. You know, I noticed that money is being moved from the computer fund to the capital improvement fund to then purchase the ERP program, and can you just enlighten us on why we're doing it that way as opposed to just the computer fund paying for the ERP software?
Absolutely.
And what the effect is of doing it that way?
Sure. So there's a couple of reasons. One, the ERP fund is obviously going to go over multi-years, and so if we left it in the technology fund, we would have to bring it to you for reappropriation every year. This enables us to put it over into the CIP and carry that approval throughout the period of time. We will also be capitalizing that because it's quite a large replacement, and this will enable us to do that in the capital side.
What, what does it mean when you say capitalizing it from a city standpoint? So I understand from my business standpoint, capitalizing it means I depreciate it over a number of years. Expensing it means I take it all this year, but the city has no concerns about income taxes or anything like that, so...
That's correct.
The reason I might do one or the other doesn't apply to the city, so why does that apply to the city?
It applies to the city in the sense that we will, we do have a capital assets fund, if you want to use that terminology, that we put all of our assets into. We don't depreciate them as far as income tax goes, but we do depreciate them on our books. It is required, and it also enables us to plan for replacement. And so that's why we would put something on as an asset versus just expensing it.
Right. Okay, got it. And then finally, the last question, follow-up I have on this would be, how does this action impact our calculation on our, on our required capital improvement spending, our ninety-eight-one-on-one funds?
Great question. This doesn't affect the ninety-eight-one-on-one funds at all, because these dollars came directly from our operating funds, and so they don't have anything to do with the ninety-eight-one-on-one funds.
Okay. So the ninety-eight-one-on-one calculation is based on collections, not on expenditures?
Correct. That is correct.
The amount that's got to be expended is based on the collections, not on what's expended?
That's correct. Not what's expended out of the capital fund, but what's collected in the general fund from a sales and use tax perspective. That then is transferred over to the capital fund, and after that's done, we don't do that calculation anymore.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. Any further questions?
No other questions.
So the final slide demonstrates how we calculated our one-time funds for the general fund this year, and you can see, if you take a look at this slide, it was really all from our revenues. Our sales tax, while it was nine-point-six percent, exceeded our budget of nine percent, and so about four-hundred thousand dollars there. Some large one-time building revenues, we spoke to these at the third quarter, but again, this is the construction that's happening down on the east side of Fifty-S sixth and Maudsworth, and then all of our other revenue sources really pretty much met budget. So we had about six-point-two million in revenues that exceeded budget. On the expenditure side, we had about two-point-six million in savings. You can see we're asking tonight to carry over about two-point-two million of that, so really about three-hundred-and-eighty thousand in savings. Not a lot when you consider our overall budget was a hundred-and-fifteen million, pretty tight there. I'm certainly feeling the pressure. I know all of our department directors are feeling the pressure there. We'll talk more about that during this next budget cycle. Asking to use about one-point-five million... Asking to use about $1.5 million of that total savings to one-time tonight, and about $70,000 for new requests, ultimately leaving us about $5 million. In the past, we have brought that additional $5 million to City Council with recommendations. This year, we felt like it was very wise to hold on to those dollars and use them to help offset our increasing CIP costs. So 72nd Avenue, Ralston Road, Myers Pool, and to also allow city management the opportunity to address any kind of recessionary needs coming forth. So again, this $5 million will go into the general fund fund balance, and then, when it's time to spend, we will bring that back to City Council.
You had indicated the building revenues on the east side of Wadsworth. It's actually in the west side.
Sorry, west side. Thank you.
I'm kind of familiar with that $30 land deal that brought that $5.5 million into the city's coffers. So, just saying.
Thank you for the clarification, Mayor.
Next.
That's it.
Very good. Questions? Not seeing any. Is there anybody that wishes to testify for or against this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, opening up for City Council questions or actions. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move that Council Bill 23008, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2023, be approved on final reading, numbered 4841, and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval? All votes cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Jones being an excused absence. Thank you. That ends our public hearings for tonight. We do have one individual for public comment at this point via Zoom. Under our five-minute limit.
Hello? Are you there?
Yes, we are. If you'll state your name.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Clemmons. My address is 6292 Kilmer Loop, Unit 202. And I'm the president of the HOA of Westwood Villas. I would like to speak about the West 63rd Avenue and McIntyre intersection. There have been a lot of emails going back and forth, and I want to apologize for my intense email last week that I sent to everyone at the city. But there's been a lot of... This has been a hot topic for our immediate residents. And there have been many versions of what's going to happen at our intersection. Now, I didn't know about your budget presentation tonight, and so I'm hoping that we can still talk about what's going to happen at this intersection. We have over 200 residents that use West 63rd Avenue, and they have only one way in and one way out. We use this for ingress and egress. And I've asked for some decisions to get made, and how decisions are made, and how items are budgeted for an intersection. I see a few issues here. I actually have been asking for a pedestrian solution since 2019. But now, all of a sudden, the city is going to push ahead with a signalized pedestrian crossing, from what we understand. And the senior assisted living is going to be finished probably right about the time you're putting that in. And I see this as kind of an interesting coincidence, since the senior center is advertising the benefit of using Broad Lake Park across the street, and they will have to cross McIntyre right there. The city predicted in the traffic, when they did the traffic counts, a traffic study of 300 trips coming out of the senior living center. The city, though, does have to look at a number of things that are coming down from Jefferson County. And that is 54th and McIntyre, possibly 140 residents with 363 parkings. 50th and McIntyre, 33 homes. 48th and Eldridge, 20 homes. There is 20 acres south of the senior center, that is PUD from Jeffco. And then, of course, the 40 acres south of us, that is predicted to be a trucking distribution center with possibly 900 trips going in and out of McIntyre. The residents east and west of McIntyre would like you to... Would like to implore the city to reevaluate what's going to happen at our intersection. It has been said that there is not enough space for another light at West 63rd Avenue. And I want to let you know that I found the city has three lights that are closer together at 80th, going east to Sheridan. And those lights are 700 feet apart and 500 feet apart, whereas the distance between West 63rd Avenue and the King Super Light is 1,000 feet. So in this respect, we could have a light there. I'm not expecting a fully signalized light immediately. It may take three or four years to install. However, the alternative of restricted right-in and right-out would cause many of our residents to try to make a U-turn at 64th and McIntyre, or go into shopping centers to make U-turns, which are not very safe either. And in a conversation I had with Fire Marshal Stephen Parker, he stated that the AFPD would prefer that the intersection be traffic signalized rather than a right-in and a right-out. I'm asking that Arvada please look ahead and be proactive. The residents are asking for a moratorium on this decision, pending the numerous Jefferson County developments, with the hopes that traffic signals can be recommended for West 63rd Avenue and McIntyre, rather than putting a Band-Aid pedestrian crossing that could cost upwards of $200,000 for this pedestrian crossing signal. My question is, how is the decision made? Can the residents give input on this? And what is the timeline for changing this decision and looking ahead for the city as to what's coming down? Unfortunately, the city is going to be... Is not going to benefit from all of the development that is going on in Jeffco. But I would hope that we could take a look at everything that's happening there and put a traffic signal at West 63rd Avenue and McIntyre, instead of just a pedestrian crossing. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope we can get together and solve this in a timely fashion. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. Our city team is looking at following up with some responses to you and your fellow citizens there. So stay tuned, and this is certainly an issue that is at the forefront of our thoughts here at the city. So thank you for your public comment. Next, do we have anybody else signed up for a public comment at this point? We do not. Public comment portion is closed. And then, report from City Council. Do I have any reports? Ms. Simpson?
Yes. So the Arvada Center had its annual... Second Annual Arts for All Gala on Saturday. I want to thank my councilmember colleagues who came. I was co-chair of this year's event. And while we were up here, we got the fundraising total. I'm pleased to announce that the gala raised more than $235,000 for arts education for youth here in Arvada and Jefferson County. Very exciting.
And I understand Ms. Smith was responsible for $200,000 of that.
Yes. Ms. Smith will be saving her gas money for a long time.
Very good. Yeah, congratulations, Ms. Simpson, for your chair of that great event. Sorry we were not able to attend, but the show is terrific. Everybody go see Damn Yankees. It's a very, very fun show. Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, thank you. I want to also congratulate the Arvada Center on their event. This past weekend, it was incredibly well-done, and as Ms. Simpson said, very successful for them. And so glad for that. And I want to congratulate Ms. Simpson for doing just a spectacular job in emceeing and organizing that event and making it so successful. You really missed your calling. You did an amazing job, and congratulations to both of you.
Are you trying to tell me something, Mr. Marriott?
Okay. Ms. Gillis, anything you have for us tonight?
I just want to take a moment to give a shout-out to the city team for putting on the bulky item drop-off this weekend. We had over 1,400 cars, 89 30-foot, 30-yard containers, and hundreds of mattresses. The team, it's an opportunity for teams from all departments to come together, and they did a fantastic job. Following that on Sunday, I also want to shout-out to the city team and the Festivals Commission for the Kite Festival. Again, a lot of teamwork, a lot of people, and having that sunshine for that Kite Festival, it was packed. So a lot of good work, and I'm really proud of the team.
Very good. As well you should be. Ms. Morris, anything?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Very good. That's always a good thing when the lawyer doesn't have anything. We stand adjourned.